Okay, good evening, everyone. It's seven o'clock and we have our regular selectmen's meeting tonight, Select Board meeting, excuse me. I'd like to do a roll call vote, signing with Mr. Kyra.
Mr. Kyra here.
Jacob Guewer here.
Lilly Maselli here.
Garrett DePalma here.
Okay. Could all, everyone please stand and salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all forms.
Before we start with our agenda, I would like to offer a moment of silence in a moment to Mr. George Hooper, Sr., who recently passed away. George is a longtime Wilmington resident, born in Everett, married his wife Alice in 1958, and him and his family, Alice and their family, moved to Wilmington in 1969. They raised three boys, George Jr., Greg, and Glenn. George worked law enforcement with the MBTA Police Department as well as Chelsea and Wilmington Police Departments. For many years, George served as a member and chair of the Wilmington Elderly Housing Authority. He was also an active volunteer with the Wilmington Community Fund, a former member and chair of the Wilmington Finance Committee for years as well, and he was a former selectman on our board here. George was also a lifelong member of the Wilmington Knights of Columbus, where he served as, at one point, as a past Grand Knight, and was also a longtime member of the Elks. His wake will be Wednesday, the 29th of October, from four to seven over at Nichols', and his funeral is Thursday at 11:00 a.m. So if I may, I'd just like to offer a moment of silence in his memory. So, okay, so on with our agenda, thank you. Okay. Okay, I'd like to take a moment to review and sign payroll and bills payable for warrants out of session. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Should we do a roll call?
Yeah, we need to do a roll call.
Okay, sorry, why would we do that?
Jacob Kyer, yes.
Jacob Guewer, yes.
Lilly Maselli, yes.
Garrett DePalma, yes.
Frank West, yes. And we also have our approval of minutes from October 14th of 2025. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, so it was made by Jake, seconded by Gary, all in favor by roll call. We'll do it this side first. Mr. Palmer?
Garrett DePalma, yes.
Lilly Maselli, yes.
Jacob Guewer, yes.
Kevin?
Jacob Kyer, yes.
Frank West, yes, thank you. Okay, we have no appointments, so Mr. Manager, if we could go on with communications.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first communication is a memorandum from the town manager to the Select Board regarding the November 20th special town meeting, will be coming up next month. This is to provide the Board, more importantly, the public, some more information regarding that special town meeting. This town meeting was the result of two petitions that were submitted to the town. Each petition had a separate warrant article on it and a request for a special town meeting. Both petitions had the minimum 200 signatures certified from registered voters in Wilmington, so they were valid petitions pursuant to MGL Chapter 39, Section 10. The Select Board then is mandated to call a special town meeting within 45 days and place those two petition articles on the warrant. As we work through the background of the scheduling the special town meeting, the 20th was, for scheduling purposes, the only real date that we could do to, and still meet our 45-day requirement. Importantly, this Board, the Town, the Clerk are not allowed to change the articles. They cannot be changed, altered, or amended from their petition form. So that means if there were misspellings, if there are any kind of errors, the Town is not allowed to change those articles. So they are required to be put in the warrant as submitted on the petition. I included the information for the Board based on historic data for previous town meetings. We estimate that the cost of this town meeting will be between $6,000 and $7,000. The bulk of that is for the renting of audiovisual equipment, and then the remainder is for With respect to the two articles, we did have Town Council review those articles and provide an opinion on those articles. Article One is the article that seeks to overturn the vote of the Select Board to authorize the demolition of the Bazell Senior Center. According pursuant to Town Council, because that article is outside the scope of town meeting, it would not result in a legally binding article, but would be a non-binding or advisory vote. So, because this body is the executive body of the Town, and town meeting is the legislative body of the Town, there are certain powers that are within the purview of one body or the other, just like if we had, for instance, the school, if we had failed to get the school vote and succeed to borrow the money for the school vote, we couldn't come to the Select Board to try and overturn Town Meeting's decision on that. By the same token, Town Meeting can't overturn a decision that's within the purview of the Select Board. So that Article One would not result in a binding vote, but it would be an advisory vote. Article Two is an article that seeks to allocate funds the amount of $615,000 for the renovation and improvements to the former Bazell Senior Center. The appropriation of funds is within the jurisdiction of Town Meeting, as Town Meeting is the only body in town that can appropriate funds. And so that appropriation is a legal article, and obviously within the purview of Town Meeting, if they wanted to go forward with it. So I wanted to put that together so that the public and this body could have that additional information, and obviously I wanted to open up to any questions from the Board, if the Board had any at this time.
Question I have is Article One fails. Do we have to go on to Article Two?
Yes. We have to have both articles because they are, they're both on the warrant, and the warrant can't be amended prior to this meeting. We're required to go forward with the meeting and those two articles.
I have a question as well, thank you. So even if that Article One passes, it doesn't change the vote?
They do not have the power to overturn the vote of the Select Board, that's correct. So it would be, some town meetings, for instance, have taken votes on kind of national political items or votes that are symbolic rather than than...
Burlington just did that on the ICE detention center.
Yes, and so they can't make ICE not have a detention center in Burlington, but they took, what, a symbolic vote?
To show that they didn't want it.
Right, and so this would be, in effect, that type of vote, because the Town Meeting doesn't have the power to actually do it, they would be kind of a, and it's called, often called like a sense of the meeting, so we're getting a sense of how the Town Meeting feels about a particular item.
Okay, and the Select, I'm sorry, just to follow up, and the Select Board doesn't have to take any action, obviously?
There's nothing from Town Meeting that would mandate the Select Board to take any action.
Okay, thanks.
So that was that communication, and I believe that is all of our communications. Mr. Chair.
Okay, so we have a Board to Consider item, which would be executing the collective bargaining agreement between the Town of Wilmington and the New England Police Benevolent Association Local 101 Public Safety Dispatch Union for the period of 1 July 2025 through 30 June 2026.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, excuse me, is there a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Palmer?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, I'll start with Mr., did you have discussion, Mr. Kyra?
No.
Okay, take a roll call vote, Mr. Kyra, we'll go this way first.
Yes.
Jacob Guewer, yes.
Lilly Maselli, yes.
Garrett DePalma, yes.
Frank West, yes. Okay. Next, Board to Consider, the request of Diane Garrity from the Parish of Transfiguration to place promotional signs at Town Hall for their annual November Fest fundraiser. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? We'll go this way, Mr. DePalmer, we'll do a roll call vote?
Yes. Garrett DePalma, yes.
Lilly Maselli, yes.
Jacob Guewer, yes.
Jacob Kyer, yes.
Frank West, yes. Okay, here's a request from Jeff Vannuti, Bliss Point Meadery, to obtain a Farmers Market Winery license to sell wine at the 2025 Winter Farmers Market. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Maselli, is there any discussion? We'll go this way again, Mr. Kyra, roll call vote?
Mr. Kyra, yes.
Jacob Guewer, yes.
Lilly Maselli, yes.
Garrett DePalma, yes.
Frank West, yes, thank you. And finally, Board to Consider, request from Noel Powell from Aronapp Sellers LLC to obtain Farmers Market Winery license to sell wine at the 2025 Wilmington Winters Farmers Market. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Maselli?
Second.
Oh, Mr. Kyer, Mr. DePalmer? Any discussion? All in favor, Gary, I'll go back to you.
Garrett DePalma, yes.
Lilly Maselli, yes.
Jacob Guewer, yes.
Jacob Kyer, yes.
Frank West, yes, thank you. Okay, is there any public comments?
Rob Fasulo, 28 Marjory Road.
Excuse me just a second, we're going to limit public comments to five minutes.
It'll take ten seconds.
Thank you.
Two Fridays ago, Mr. West, I emailed you to find out if that building was still going to be standing for the special. I have not gotten an answer, will I be getting one?
Okay, I think it's going to be standing for, through town meeting.
The building is not going to be demolished before town meeting.
Thank you.
Suzanne Sullivan, 60 Lorren Street. Mr. Chairman, is there some legal opinion on the binding of Article One, whether it's binding or not?
Do we have a written?
So there's an opinion provided for us by Town Council, that's obviously attorney-client privileged.
Why is that obvious, Mr. Chairman, through you?
Go ahead, you.
It's an opinion of Town Council, those are attorney-client privileged.
If it's something that's discussed in open meeting, why is that not an open, why is that not a public document?
The discussion of it doesn't, the discussion of it doesn't break attorney-client privilege.
And what harm does it serve to share Council's opinion that is derived from, that's supposed to be on behalf of the Town?
So I could provide you with some information that you may find helpful, which is Town Council will be at the public hearing in front of the Finance Committee on the warrant, so if the public has questions for Town Council, they can certainly ask through the Finance Committee at that time.
And why is a ruling on what is or is not an article binding or not binding, why is that attorney-client privilege?
Any legal opinion provided by Town Council is attorney-client privileged.
I don't believe that that's true.
Okay.
I do not, I 100% disagree with that, 100%. And I would really suggest that this Select Board make sure that you know what your rights and what the laws are, and especially what the public has access to, or the right to have access to. I do not believe that every opinion that comes from Town Council is something that you all get to discuss in a public meeting, and the public's told you don't get to see that opinion. I strongly disagree with that. I think that's a breach of public information, and I would suggest that this Board make sure that you're not breaking the laws and the public trust. You're definitely breaking the public trust, but whether it's legal or not is a different story. You're definitely breaking the public trust.
So you certainly have legal recourse, if you believe that's the case, you can make a public records request. If it's denied for attorney-client privilege, you can appeal it to the state.
Right.
And that would demonstrate whether or not we were correct or not.
Thank you very much, I really appreciate you directing me in that direction, because I do understand what my rights are, and I do understand that I can do that. The question always becomes whether or not, it should always come down to what a citizen has to do to hold their elected officials and appointed officials accountable, and whether I have the time and whether I want to do that. What I'm saying to you tonight is that I think that this Board ought to really take into consideration the public trust. The reason why we have these laws is to make sure that we have trust in the public. I mean that the public has trust in their elected officials and the appointed officials, whatever, the business of the Town. It's our business. We pay the taxes, this is our Town. And to be hiding Town Council's opinion, and Frank, you remember when this happened about 20-something years ago, when council was used against the will of the people, and what happened? We changed the Board and we changed Council. Don't push us into doing that again, right, Frank? You were one of those people that was elected to make sure that the public officials were being held accountable, and that Council wasn't going to be used against the will of the people. We pay that salary, it's supposed to work for us to uphold the bylaws, and when opinions come out, especially something as benign as this one, it shouldn't be hidden. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other pub?
Good evening, Jim Defoe, 11 Bancroft Street. First off, Frank, I'd like to thank you for replying to my email I sent to the Board with regards to the HEROES Act that was passed by the Legislature back in August of 2024. How do you pronounce your last name, sir?
Slagel.
Mrs. Slagel, thank you for your response and your reply, I appreciate that as well. Got a couple of questions on that, because as I stated in my email, I plan on being very proactive with regards to this issue, so I would like to offer my help to the Board with the anticipation that the Board will be responsive. Now, I understand that April 1st of next year will be the cutoff date for any credits given for tax abatements for the HEROES Act. The problem I have with the statement you made in your email was that you had no knowledge of there not being a warrant presented at last town meeting for the act to be adopted. I have a disagreement with that, but I won't throw anybody under the bus right now, but I do have the emails that say that was brought to the Town's purview and nothing was done on it. So that's an entire year that the veterans of the community have lost out on a legal abatement. Now, with that, I appreciate, again, I appreciate the fact that you mentioned that, you know, you will bring it forward in the warrant for next town meeting, okay? Problem, next town meeting's not until May 2nd, cutoff date's April 1st, so that's three years. The veterans of this Town will lose the opportunity to take advantage of the abatements as passed by the Legislature. So I'm asking you, how do we fix that?
I don't know that we can fix it before town meeting, is it?
I mean, it has to be a vote of town meeting?
My understanding is it doesn't, it just has to be adopted by the Board.
No, it has to be a vote of town meeting. I read the Division of Local Government bulletin regarding the HEROES Act, it does require a vote of town meeting. If I, if we could put it in front of the Board, I promise you I would.
Okay, well, Boston, okay, Boston City Council, Boston, City of Boston being comprised differently governmental-wise.
Yeah, cities can do it via city councils.
Can do it via city council, okay, so.
But it's the legislative body, which in a Town is the Town Meeting.
So my question is, and I would put this, put this forward for an answer for next, for next month through Town Council, can it be done at, can it be done at a special town meeting?
I believe it could be.
Okay, so that'd be number one. If it can be, I'll be more than happy to rally the 200 signatures and get it done, but it still won't take effect until next year. Now, being a practical person and fiscally extremely conservative, you just mentioned that the symbolic meeting that we're going to have next month is going to run us in the neighborhood of $6,000.
Yes.
I don't believe in spending anybody else's money foolishly. Now, can you get Town Council to research, can we extend the deadline past April 1st to May 2nd until such time as it's voted on at a regular town meeting? Nobody loses time here, nobody's going to, somebody significantly dropped the ball this year, significant, we won't go pointing fingers, it's done. Let's save the $6,000, save the 200 signatures, get it passed at the next meeting, correction, next town meeting, with an understanding that it'll take effect for that Town, for that fiscal year. Can you get any answer back to us?
I can certainly ask Town Council if that's possible, absolutely. And note, if we do pass it, so the first type it would have been eligible was for the current fiscal year.
Yes. So we lost that one, because it would have had to have been passed last year. It would have been, it would have had to have been passed at the last town meeting.
Right, but if we pass it next year, it will be available for the next, for the next fiscal year.
Correct.
So we would only, the only year we would lose is this one.
Yes, but if we wait until next town meeting, we lose the next year too, because the next town meeting's not until May.
Okay.
Is there any way to make the article retroactive?
That's, that's.
I will ask, I will ask Town Council.
That's what Town, that's what Town Council has to come back with.
Sure. Just make it retroactive.
Can I ask a question, is this something we have to do every year?
No.
It's an adoption of the statute.
It's just an adoption of, it's a one-time, and of course, we would ask for the maximum benefit allowed by law.
Okay.
There are several portions of the statute, but some of them are local options, which means the local municipality has to accept them, they can't, it didn't just happen.
But can we have an answer by next?
So I can, I can promise to ask, I don't see there's any reason why we wouldn't get an answer by next Board meeting, but I will absolutely ask, I'll send an email tomorrow.
Because that'll, that'll generate how much movement needs to be brought forth, because if we can get, if we can get it retroactive, we wait.
Right, exactly.
And we lose nothing.
Right.
If we can't get it retroactive, I got to start grabbing signatures, I'm going to start making this stink, and I don't think anybody will want that.
So I will absolutely...
It's easier if we agree.
Yeah, I'll absolutely ask if there's any way that we can, we can do that and make sure that we get an opinion from them as to what the effect of is, if we, if you have to wait till May.
I'll be here next month for the answer, thank you.
I'll send you, I'll send you the answer via email.
I'll be here.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Just, just something on that, and I don't want to be the negative part of it, but making it retroactive may be a little difficult, only because if it involves monies, we have a budget from year to year with appropriations, I don't know if you can make that retroactive. Maybe you can, Mr. Slagel, but something that I would ask Town Council as well, will, if this goes retroactive, financially are there some issues?
I can certainly ask, and because it's a exemption, and we do have the overlay.
I was looking at retroactive as in like, give them the accumulated COLA, or whatever the cost, the increase is in year one, at least.
Just add it all up.
And so instead of doing 3%, they get 6% to catch up from last year. That's probably where they're going to end up.
Yeah.
To your point, Kevin, in my head, I probably should have clarified, maybe you can catch them up at least.
I will absolutely ask Town Council whatever options we have.
That's probably more likely.
Yeah.
If, if that's possible. I'm sorry, that's rude.
Sorry, I meant that, Kevin.
I mean, that's fine, I don't want to, I don't want to stifle something, you know, so if it's going to work retroactively, that's great, but I just want to make sure I'm doing it the right way.
Yes.
But, but my thing is, to get it for this fiscal year, slim and none, okay? I am fairly well-versed in tax law, slim and none, because of the, because of the time in which it needs to be adopted, the Town needs to plan for that, it's not something you can just swipe in. But my question, the point is, May 1st, I'm sorry, April 1st to May 2nd, that's a thirty-day window. So getting it retroactive, or extending the April 1st deadline, whether or not legally we have the authority to do that. And if we have the authority to legally extend the April 1st deadline to, say, May 15th, because that'll give us plenty of time to have the Town Meeting, get the Town to vote on it, up and down, and then we don't have to worry about any retroactive fees or payments being made.
Mm-hmm.
And that will significantly help the Finance Committee not have to, you know, move columns.
We could, I will absolutely ask, we'll get an answer from Town Council.
If you've got thousands of veterans in this Town that this affects.
Yeah, well, like I said, he'll, he'll get an answer, and hopefully it'll be an answer that will satisfy, we'll find out.
Not an issue to satisfy.
No, no, I'm just...
It's, it's, do I have to stop rallying the troops?
Yeah, no, no, I understand, much appreciated, and thank you for your service, by the way.
And just one more add-on, is this something that our state rep or our state senator can assist us with, with the deadline extension?
It's definitely something I'm going to ask Town Council.
Yeah, okay.
Any other public comments? Okay, moving on to announcements, does anyone have an announcement? I have two quick ones, and just want to let you know, I went to the Saracota Committee Fund Program that they had last Friday, they had a entertainer, Lenny Zircon, which was very entertaining, he was there from 7:00 to 9:00, sang a lot of big band-type music, Frank Sinatra and stuff like that, and I just wanted to give kudos to the Saracota Lecture Fund that, to put this on, and they do this, I think this is, I think the 110th year or something like that of putting it on. The other thing is that Mr. DePalmer and I went to the Wilmington Andover Line on Saturday morning, and we participated in the pre-emulation event with Andover, which essentially was the marking of, agreed to the boundaries and marked the boundaries of Wilmington and Andover on Andover Street. There were two big granite posts that have been pre-emulated, if you will, since 1935, I think over, I think it was like four or five different times, Mr. Palmer?
Yes, and I think the last one was, was it 1950?
That one was 1970.
It could have been, yes, the second one.
Yeah.
Yes.
The second one was, I think the first one, yeah. But there were actually two different posts that we marched to and, or walked to, and we were joined by three Andover Selectmen, including their chair, which is Alex Vispoli, wanted to thank him. We also had police escort from Wilmington and Andover, so I wanted to thank the Wilmington Police Department for sending an officer down with a cruiser, so if you could give that word to the Chair.
Will do.
It's appreciated. Any new business?
Mr. Chair, just to tell you...
I'm sorry, sir, sorry.
Just want to thank you, Mr. Chair, the members of the Board, and Mr. Slagel, as well as Mr. O'Neil, for accommodating me tonight by Zoom. I had a knee replacement six days ago now, I may look fine, but I credit the pain pills for that.
Yeah.
So, thank you for accommodating me tonight, and hopefully I'll be at the next meeting.
Well, we wish, we want to wish you well, Mr. Kyra, and I think we had a short meeting to accommodate your knee, but in all seriousness, we wish you well, and, you know, on behalf of the Board, so speedy recovery.
Absolutely.
So I think that's, yeah, sure.
Just a reminder that Friday's Halloween, and everybody be safe, drive safe, there's going to be a lot of little ones out there, and just be careful.
Yeah, good call. Any other announcements? Okay. Okay, Mr. Manager, if you could go for important dates.
Important dates, Mr. Chair, so October 27th through October 31st, we have the curbside collection of yard waste. October 29th, there's brush drop-off at Old Main Street from 8:00 to 2:00. November 1st, there's brush drop-off at Old Main Street from 9:00 to 4:00. November 2nd, turn your clocks back, change your detector batteries, tis the season. November 30th through 7th, we also have another week of collection of yard waste. November 6th, we will have the Finance Committee public hearing with respect to the special town meeting, that'll be Town Hall here in the auditorium at 7:00 p.m. November 5th, we have brush drop-off at Old Main Street from 8:00 to 2:00. November 8th, we have brush drop-off at Old Main Street from 9:00 to 4:00. And November 10th, we have our next Select Board meeting here at Town Hall, Room 9, at 7:00 p.m. And the next day, November 11th, is Veterans Day. Town offices will be closed, but we will be having the Veterans Day ceremony at Town Common at 11:00 a.m. November 12th, we have brush drop-off at Old Main Street from 8:00 to 2:00. November 15th, we have brush drop-off at Old Main Street from 9:00 to 4:00. The 17th through the 21st of November is another week of curbside collection of yard waste. November 19th, we have the brush drop-off at Old Main Street from 8:00 to 2:00. November 20th, that's Thursday, November 20th, there's a special time meeting at Wilmington High School in the auditorium at 7:00 p.m. November 22nd, there's brush drop-off at Old Main Street from 9:00 to 4:00. And then November 24th is Select Board meeting here at Town Hall, Room 9, at 7:00 p.m. That will be the discussion of the local property tax policy with reference to our tax classification for FY 2026. And that is our important dates, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we have our salute to service this week, we'd like to salute... We'd like to salute him in first class, Leonard Whitford, who was born in Wakefield, Mass on November 2nd, 1930, joined the Air Force, US Air Force in June 22nd, 1951, from Boston, Mass. Mr. Leonard served, excuse me, Leonard served from, with the 496 Fighter Interceptor Squadron, where he served in Korea, and was awarded the National Defense Service Medal. He was also awarded the Good Conduct Medal, Occupation Medal for Germany and Japan, Korean Service Medal, and United Nations Service Medal. So again, we'd like to thank him, as we do all our veterans, for their service. With that, I've taken it, motion to, and the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Second, all in favor by roll call, we'll do it, Mr. Kyra first.
Jacob Kyra, yes.
Jacob Guewer, yes.
Lili Maselli, yes.
Garrett DePalmer, yes.
Frank West, yes. Thank you very much, folks, and have a good night.
Happy Halloween.